Call the roll.
Alderman Mathie?
Here.
Alderman Payne?
Here.
Alderman Malamoy?
Here.
Alderman Burgess?
Here.
Alderman Painter?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Black?
Here.
Alderman Hallman?
Here.
Alderman Bray?
Here.
Mayor Renner?
Here. Thank you very much. And, actually, we're starting out with recognitions and appointments and one that we've all heard of quite a bit about. And we certainly express our deepest sympathies. Mr. Rogers, if you could please come forward. Proclamation of recognition of Army Sergeant Josh Rogers. Whereas on behalf of the City of Bloomington, I wish to extend sincere condolences over the passing of Army Sergeant Josh Rogers. Whereas Army Sergeant Josh Rogers' death leaves our community with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such an honored and respected citizen. And whereas Army Sergeant Josh Rogers served our country and community, and whereas Army Sergeant Josh Rogers earned the respect, admiration, high regard of all whom he came into contact with in our country and community has sustained a great loss in his passing. And whereas I, Mayor Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby deem it an honor to recognize Army Sergeant Josh Rogers, I express deep appreciation for his dedication to our country and community and extend to his family my serious sympathy. Therefore, in witness thereof, I do set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Bloomington to be affixed this eighth day of May, 2017. Absolutely.
Yeah, I wasn't prepared to speak, but I felt like I should here. Um, and I didn't know so many people came to the meeting, so. I would really like to thank you guys for recognizing Josh. And I, our message, I think, throughout this has been that Josh was part of this community. Some of you here, several throughout the community, helped coach him, teach him, prayed with him at church. He was just a normal kid with all the same demons that any of our teenagers or young adults have. And he happened to find a passion with the Army. We take comfort that he lived and died his dream. And we are proud that he could sacrifice on behalf of our community for our country. So, thank you for taking the time. Thank you for the time you guys put in. This would make our country great, assemblies like this, the freedom to make choices. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Bless you. Things are maybe not in the right order here. I'm missing the, Taisho Okazaki? Oh, oh, I see. There's no, I don't have a, oh, okay. Taisho Okazaki, um, in your visiting experiences, can you come forward? Please go forward. I'm sorry. I thought there was, I thought we were giving you a proclamation. Right over there.
Hi, I'm Taisho Okazaki. I'm from Japan. I'd like to change students from Asakawa, Japan. And, um, the time in United States was really fun. And thank you for supporting me. I appreciate it.
Well, and we're coming for the 55th anniversary.
Yeah, I know that.
In the first week of August, so I hope to see you again then.
Yeah, I can't wait seeing you.
Thank you so much. What, what, what are some experiences, Mayor Protam has asked?
Could you just comment a little bit on a couple of your top experiences here, maybe things you really loved that you didn't expect?
Well, I like hot dog in United States. You know, I think it's the best country to eat hot dog in here.
You have to come back when Portillo's is open.
Yeah, I can't wait, but I have to live here, so I have to come back for hot dog. And good experience, I think going to prom, prom was fun. Yeah, it's so American experience. And what else? Oh, host family? Yeah, spent time with host family. I spent with two host family and actually three, but two host family and they treat me really good. And I love them, so.
Good. Well, thank you so much. And again, we'll see you in August.
Yep.
In Japan.
Yep.
In our system.
See you in Japan.
Thanks. With recognition of Dr. Stephen Pilcher, Bloomington Primary Care Physician. Come forward. Proclamation recognition of Dr. Stephen C. Pilcher. Whereas we're here to celebrate the achievements of Dr. Stephen C. Pilcher, owner and practicing physician of Bloomington Primary Care. And whereas Dr. Pilcher has won the Award of Family Physician of the Year in the state of Illinois, he is now in the poll for the National Physician of the Year Award. And whereas key determinants of the selection committee involve, included his involvement as medical director in the starting and growth of Chestnut Family Health Center and having it attained federally qualified health center status. It allows our community a safety net for uninsured and underinsured. And whereas Dr. Pilcher's leadership and advocate bromance as a medical officer culminating in president of the medical staff in 2014, 2015, something uncommon for a family physician. Whereas the committee noted starting a private practice in the face of enormous healthcare change, despite the challenges, exceptional growth and attained nationally recognition status of Level III NCQA Patient Center Medical Center in 2016. And whereas Dr. Pilcher received this distinguished award from the Academy of Family Physicians, IAFP. Within IAFP, there are about 4,700 members. The criteria to be considered for the award is two nominations, followed by three patients' letters of recommendation and three peers' letters of reference. And whereas Dr. Pilcher started Bloomington Primary Care in 2010 as a solo practice, he's since added two other doctors and three nurse practitioners. And whereas I, Mayor Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend this proclamation to Dr. Pilcher with sincere congratulations. Therefore, in witness thereof, I do set my hand and cause the seal of City Bloomington to be affixed this eighth day of May, 2017. Congratulations, Doctor. Thank you.
That's my staff back there. I think the other one doing the oohs and ahs, so. That was a mouthful. I'm sorry that was so long. First of all, I'd like to bring to your attention that this is Nurses Week, and my nurses came here on Nurses Day, so thank you for my nurses. Second is that my children's teacher call you the bowtie mayor, and you're not wearing a bowtie, so they're gonna be confused. That's the mayor.
I didn't get the bowtie memo. I could have done that.
Sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Award of Green Achievement presented to Midwest Fiber Recycling and Proclamation of Green Achievement Award presented from the City of Bloomington. And do we have, let's see, Mr. Karch, are you going to accept this? And do we have somebody from Midwest Fiber? They weren't able to make it? Okay. Well, I'll read this. And this is a Green Achievement Award presented to the City of Bloomington. We've gone green recycling 9,777,460 pounds of material in 2016. And I present this to you. I'll go ahead if you will take this on behalf of Midwest Fiber.
And on behalf of Bloomington staff, the public work staff, it was a great job every day for us.
Awesome. Oh, Jim, can I give this to you too as well? All right. And this is a Green Achievement Award. Whereas environmental stewardship benefits men, women, children of all racial, social, ethnic, religious and economic groups, as well as the plants, animals and natural resources of the City of Bloomington. And whereas recognizing the inextricable connection between the environment and human health. And whereas education and outreach regarding environmental stewardship are essential in preserving the environment and natural resources for a healthy and sustainable future. And whereas an essential partnership has been built between the City of Bloomington, the Town of Normal, the Ecology Action Center, inspiring and insisting the residents of McLean County in creating, strengthening and preventing, preserving a healthy environment. And whereas in addition to the 10 million pounds of recycling from curbside pickup, the Ecology Action Center's participation in America's Recycle Day collected material from 415 households, including 5,000 pounds of electronics, 2,400 pounds of textiles and 203 pairs of eyeglasses from the Bloomington-Normal community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim the recognition of Green Achievement Award here. So I can give this to you as well. And thank you, Jim. We have an unusual number of proclamations today. Lots of good things happening. And this one happens to be a proclamation as, wait a minute, National Bike to Work Week. Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong order. Sorry, Michael. You're right. Yeah, that was Public Works needs to come up again. Okay. And this is Public Works Week. Jim, sorry. Could have had to, could you had to stay there up? Proclamation declaring May 15th to 21st, 2017, Public Works Week. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. Whereas public work services are vital to our economic well-being. And whereas public works employees strive to provide the best possible services with the available resources. And whereas the Public Works Department, the public, or the Bloomington Water Department and the Bloomington Normal Water Reclamation District take great care to deliver these services in Bloomington as responsible stewards of the public money and infrastructure. And whereas a proclamation shines a light upon these efforts. And whereas May 15th through May 21st marks National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Mayor Renner, on behalf of the City of Bloomington, do proclaim May 15th, 21st, 2017 as Public Works Week. Thank you. Sorry. Now, Michael. Give you some extra exercise here. Oh, wow, this is a long one. Okay. Proclamation, National Bike to Work Day. Whereas the bicycle is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation. And whereas thousands of Bloomington residents will experience the joys of bicycling during the summer months through educational programs, races, commuting events, trail work days, or just getting out and going for a ride. Whereas Bloomington hosts a piece of the Route 66 cross-country bicycle tourism route that attracts thousands of cross-country and local bicyclists each year, also adds economic development. Whereas these bicycling activities and attractions have great potential to have a positive impact on Bloomington's economy and tourism industry and to stimulate, oh, I pulled the thunder, economic development by making the town attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the outdoors, health lifestyles and the city of multimodal transportation. Whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, quality of life, to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, to reduce pollution and congestion. And whereas Illinois Westline University in Bloomington has been certified as a bronze bicycle-friendly university in the League of American Bicyclists since October 2014. And whereas the education of bicyclists and motorists as to the proper, proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. And whereas the McLean County Regional Planning Commission will be encouraging commuters to avoid single occupancy vehicles during the Go-To Commuter Challenge, May 15th to 21st, 2017. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists, Bike Blono, the West Bloomington Revitalization Project's New Bike Co-op, the McLean County Regional Planning Commission, the McLean County Wheelers, the Comlera Off-Road Biking Association, the Friends of the Constitution Trail, Ride Illinois and Bicycle Clubs, schools, parks, recreation departments, police departments, hospitals, communities and civic groups throughout Illinois and the United States will be promoting bicycle, bicycling as a leisure activity as well as an environmentally friendly alternative to the automobile during National Bike to Work Week, May 15th to 19th, 2017. And whereas the Third Friday in May has been declared National Bike to Work Day by the League of American Bicyclists for each of the last 61 years and is so again in 2017. And now therefore, it be resolved that I, Bloomington Mayor Terry Renner, on the half, behalf of the citizens of Bloomington, recognize May 19th, 2017 as Bike to Work Day with the city seal therefore fixed. Congratulations. Thanks, Michael. Next, we have Emergency Medical Services Week. Come on up. Good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. Hey, buddy. Got it first. There we go. Proclamation declaring May 21st to 27th, 2017, Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services are a public, are a vital public service. And whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage with thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor Renner, on behalf of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2017 as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong, Always in Service. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities. Thank you all. Thank you all for all you do for us once again. At this point, we shift to recognitions of people who, and I know a few of you are in the audience. If you'll stand as I call your names, Kasha Henry and Susan Moore to be appointed to the Library Board of Trustees. Kasha, Susan? Not here? Okay. Nicole Brown, I know is here. I saw Nicole. To the Police and Fire Commissioners. Thank you. And I know she's here as well. Elizabeth Kubba to be appointed to Citizens Beautification Committee. Elizabeth, thank you for your willingness to serve. At this point, we're moving on to public comment. Another time, I think we need to call Ripley's Believe It or Not, because we only have two for public comment this evening. And just as I have mentioned in the past, if you really want to have immediate answers or ask questions or try to solve problems, we have a mayor's open house on Friday before a regular city council meeting from 4:30 to 5:30. You can just sit right around the Fish Bowl table over there and ask questions. I don't need an appointment. Doesn't even have to be on the agenda. Okay? At this point, Melanie Shellito and then Glenn Ludwig.
So clearly you all did not get the memo that it was dressed up as Victorian era. My name is Melanie Shellito. This is Pam Eaton and Kathy Sutliff. And we are a couple of the folks who are part of the planning committee for the Cogs and Corsets event. It's a downtown festival. It is part of First Friday, and so it will be happening June 2nd through 4th. And I'm here to invite all of you to attend, to go onto the website and please participate. This is an event that we are planning as a huge promotion of downtown, both the history, the architecture, the shops, the galleries, just the sort of general flavor and color that is downtown. We are doing this in partnership with the DBA. Part of the proceeds will be going to them. And also the McLean County Museum of History. They're going to be providing some history workshops. We've got workshops for everything from Bartitsu, which is the art of self-defense with canes and parasols. We've got a costume, you're gonna, you might need that. We've got a costume contest. We have what is known as the Splendid Teapot Racing, which is an obstacle course of teapots hooked on radio-controlled chassis. These are things that we would really like families to work on together. Boy Scout troops, 4-H clubs, enter into the contest. You can try and beat the Ramp of Doom or the Tunnel of Terror or the Abyss. So that's gonna be going on, on the streets. We have got vendors will be downtown. There'll be a tea room open where you can go and enjoy tea. We are kicking off the event with an actual Tesla coil demonstration. So we'll be shooting lightning off of the Market Street deck, and that actually is sponsored by Red Raccoon Games. So there are a lot of opportunities to participate, whether you're in a contest or just coming to a workshop. We have ticketed events that include soiree in the evening. We have a cabaret show. We have a farm-to-fork dinner, and this is all happening in downtown Bloomington. Tours of the mansions. And so there's a lot to do, all ages. Please come out. Please, you know, spread the word for us. And again, it's cogsoncorsetsil.com. It's all out there. It's gonna be awesome. So come and support the downtown. Thank you so much.
We normally don't engage, but I'm gonna ask this question before Scott Black does. Does that come in a drone?
I was hoping that Scott would maybe try to build one and actually have a council be represented. Because I think our teapot race is on Jefferson Street.
It is.
At 2:30 on Saturday. And I purchased this for $2.99 at Walgreens. And I was just told you can get another little vehicle at CVF Downtown for $10.
I think the drone would cost more.
So the gauntlet is down, and we expect to see city council well represented at the teapot races, so.
Awesome. Thank you all.
I'll get my cane.
Mr. Ludwig, I tell you, we run the gamut from this to green eggs and ham. You just never know in the next exciting episode here in Bloomington City Council. Glenn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wished I'd gotten the memo, but I don't think I could have got into my corset. Anyway, congratulations. See some new faces here this evening. That's good to see. And it's good to see all of the rest of you back, too. Since the election, there has been a number of new and maybe revived issues coming before this council. So it looks like you're going to be a, a high-producing group. That's what we can always hope for. This evening, I want to go back a bit and to remind you of some, what I believe to be some real vitally important old business that is critical and needs some attention. And that's the kind of messy, unfortunate squabble that broke out during the election regarding the metro zone. And I feel that damage occurred there to the reputation and credibility of both the town and the city. And I think that there's an opportunity to, to address that and to, to restore what I think is a great need within the Twin City area, and that is very highly effective collaboration. Both municipalities, I knew I shouldn't put that down because I can't say the word. Sheriff is a portion of the responsibility and blame for, for what happened there with that meltdown. And I think that, that that's unfortunate. I, I said then, and I still feel, very disappointed and concerned about the resulting stress that, that that situation created with, between the town and the city. So that's why I'm here to advocate for that to be addressed. I, I know I'm not alone in those feelings, as I've talked to a lot of people that were concerned about that particular situation and, and the, and the damage to collaboration. So I'm just here to talk quickly about that. Most city and town currently are facing some financial and funding challenges, which seems to be an ongoing issue. But I think that, that there's always a temptation to raise taxes and fees when that occurs. But I'm suggesting, hey, good, solid collaboration can, in my opinion, and who am I to have an opinion on much of anything? But I believe that good, solid collaboration can actually create value for this region. And I want to talk region, note that. That will be in millions of dollars in a short-term, short-term time period. I really believe that can happen. So please, sit down, set aside your egos, look to the future, deliver more efficient government via creative collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that any member of the Bloomington City Council would like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Alderman Malamoy and Burgess?
Seven M.
Pardon me, seven what?
M.
Seven M, okay.
M as in Mokka.
Mokka. And?
K.
Seven K.
As in kangaroo.
Okay, kangaroo. Okay. All righty, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item Kevin, Kevin, seven M and seven K?
I'll make that motion.
Please.
I'll second.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Painter. Again, go ahead and vote. I is in favor of the motion. Okay, I'm not sure. Sorry. Okay, not everybody's vote came through yet. I'm not sure. Okay. Diana? Sorry. It was my fault, not yours. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Yeah. Technological impairment. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn to Alderman Mokka for item seven M as in Mokka.
All right, thank you. And also Malamoy.
And Malamoy. Yeah, you're M squared.
Right, there you go. Yeah, so I'm recusing myself because it involves ISU.
Okay.
Which I am an employee.
Go ahead and, he doesn't have to step out.
Go to the night room?
Oh, still step out. Okay, sorry. Is there a motion to approve item seven M? It's a move. Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Hallman. Any discussion? Okay, so I vote would be of course in favor. Motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And, yeah. Oh, you're gonna trade places? And that was the reason? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item seven K? Is in kangaroo?
It's a move.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Black, I'm assuming. Okay. Everyone go ahead and, unless there's discussion, hit and vote on that issue. Motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and we can ask Alderman, oh, she's already here. Okay. Now we move to our regular agenda. Item seven eight A. Considerations Resolution Initiating Rezoning of 204 North Allen Street and of 800 801, 802, 803, 804 and 806 West Washington Street from R2 Mixed Residential and C2 Neighborhood Shopping District to B2 General Business Service District. And we have a brief presentation by Tom Davidreiner and a brief council discussion.
Mayor, do I need to formally recuse myself from these two items on this? Right, Jeff? Right. For A and B, right?
I should be able to stick around for the, for A. It's B that's specific.
Okay, so A then you're buying B.
Oh, thank you.
B is?
Okay.
R's. WBRP.
What would be prudent? Would you just, just recuse myself for, for A?
Yeah, I, I don't think A is associated with.
It just happens to be in the neighborhood.
Okay. I don't want any problem.
Okay, so you're good to stay put. Hit it, Tom.
I think the presentation was almost done with that, but, good evening, Mayor and Council. To a certain extent, these are out of order in the way that I would have preferred to, to present. Because if it wasn't for the second item, item eight B, we wouldn't have the first item, which is eight A. Because in reviewing eight B, we found some zoning issues related to properties that are in the vicinity of the proposed, well, in the existing WBRP location. And we found that, in fact, these properties that are highlighted, and I brought a prop if we need a reminder as to where they are. The properties along Allen and Washington, not associated with WBRP and item eight B, in fact, need some rezoning to allow them to continue the use, the uses that they have in place. Because our only other option, having discovered these uses that are not legal in the current zoning, is to go and enforce and have them no longer, you know, discontinue the residential portions of their activities. We thought it might be better to rezone and, and in fact, that rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The process for this is, as Mr. Sage was, was talking, Alderman Sage was talking earlier, is to bring it through council and have council ask the planning commission to do that rezoning, to consider that rezoning. So that's what we're here tonight for, is to get your. So, that's what we're here tonight for, is to get your resolutions to let you agree that we wanna send this consideration through the planning commission. It would end up coming back to you ultimately again, but that's really what we're looking for. And I think that we've already discussed what districts are turning from what to what. But if you have any questions about this particular item, be happy to try to answer.
No questions? Okay. Well, is there a motion? Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Okay, if everyone will go ahead and vote. No abstentions this time, there we go. Motion carries nine to zero. No nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Tom. Okay? Don't go too far.
I'm actually logged. Did that matter? Do you have a vote? Didn't it come out here? Okay.
Oh, okay. And next, we go to item eight B.
I'll be recusing myself.
Okay, we'll come get you. Consideration of adopting an ordinance rezoning the property located at 724 West Washington Street from C2 Neighborhood Shopping District to B2 General Business Service District and the property located at 720 West Washington from R2 Mixed Residential District to B2 General Business Service District. And again, Mr. Davidreiner.
Well, that was the bulk of it again. West Bloomington Revitalization Project is looking, well, has changed location. They're looking to include an apartment upstairs in the new location. To do that, the existing zoning doesn't work. We needed to rezone that. As I said before, talking about this first might've made more sense when we started to talk about item eight A, because this is really what prompted us to take a look at the surrounding properties. In order to allow, and they're looking at the need for the apartment to help pay expenses for the WBRP used downstairs, we need to rezone those two properties. One is actually residential right now, but the other would be C2 residential's not allowed. Need to make that B2 to allow WBRP to do everything that they wanna do. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions with regard to this.
Questions? Okay, seeing none? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Painter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Howman. Any further discussion? Go ahead and vote, then, please. Motion carries seven to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move on to item eight C. Consideration analysis of bids and the approval of fiscal year 2018 utility maintenance contract with George Gilder and company for a city bid 2018-02 in the amount of $768,000. And we have a presentation by Mr. Hales and Mr. Karch for about 10 minutes.
Mayor and Council, I've asked Jim tonight, just to recap, why it is we started several years ago, a process by which we would put out for bid a number of different maintenance contracts, some of which are labeled emergency contracts, and thought it would just be helpful, again, to go over again our objective in these bids, how they've been effective, and to also just give an update on those. We did pick out this large contract. It was the largest from a dollar amount, $768,000, utility maintenance contracts. We wanted to use that as the example to talk about this and all these other contracts, and then Jim will also give the recommendation on this particular contract award. Jim?
Thank you, City Manager Hales. Mayor and City Council, spoiler alert, we're gonna recommend that you approve this tonight. It's, we got good prices. We were thankful the prices came in better than we anticipated. What does that mean? That means that we can actually get more work done, because way these contracts work, it's important for you to know that our crews do work out on the field. City of Bloomington, Public Works, Streets and Sewers employees have crews out in the field that do sanitary work, they do storm sewer inlets, they do a lot of this work as well. We also do maintenance contracts. And so, there's a dual-arm system that we have here in this community, the city manager's correct. We just wanted to highlight for you, you know, what's the difference? How do we go between those two? So, you can see, first, there, over the past few years, well, this is not new, we've been using maintenance contracts for multiple years now. It is a way for us to get work done that we need to get done in this community. You can see, this year, there was a spike, the water director, Bob Yale, is in the back, he can answer any specifics, but there is some additional revenue or expenditures going to the water fund, because they're looking to accomplish some additional work this year. So, they also have, they've identified that, we're working in partnership with them. The Public Works Department bids this, but we do it in cooperation with the Water Department. And so, the facet that is good to know is you already approved on the consent agenda four other maintenance contracts. This is just one of them. There are emergency, there's traffic-related issues, grading and seeding. The purpose of these is for, throughout the year, for staff to be able to be responsive when issues come up. I know Alderman never sends Public Works any requests at all, citizens never contact you for any needs, but if you did, we actually utilize two different ways. We have maintenance contracts and we have our own crews. I just wanted to highlight for you, again, when do these projects, as the city manager said, when do they go to maintenance contracts? When do our own crews do this work? And so, it's good for you to know that back in 2008, there were some cuts with our own crews, our Streets and Sewers crews. We do, it's good for you to know, in 2015, we got 59 caving alone projects done, just in Public Works. They get a project to a project and a half done, one and a half days to one day to get one caving completed. They do a great job of getting that work done. In 2016, 68 cave-ins were completed. And then, so far this year, what is good for you to know, is they've already gotten 45 cave-ins done, and we have 17 jobs outstanding. We've gotten more done this year, and how is that? A lot of credit to our solid waste division. They have actually shared employees when they've been able. We've been able to find a solid waste, if there's times seasonally where they have the ability to share some workers, it's amazing how much more efficient we can be when we have a couple extra employees driving and be able to load spoil and bring materials to the job site. So, a lot of credit, we've been able to accomplish even more. And so, we actually have been doing some comparisons, we're going to continue to do that, about the cost efficiency of our own staff. Give a lot of credit. Eric Outlaw, I've bragged on Jason Kennedy in the past with our asphalt work. Eric Outlaw is one of our crew leaders that does a lot of work on these cave-ins, and he is fun to watch on the job site, really cares about keeping the crews driven. So, a lot of credit to our staff, and we are looking at the matrix, just how we compare. And our crews, for the work that we do, we compare very well with any outside contractor, but we share and we go out to use this maintenance contract when the work exceeds what our crews can do. Sometimes the equipment, we don't have the right equipment. It's deeper than we can do, a larger project than we can do. That's whenever these maintenance contracts are invaluable. So, we appreciate your support tonight, and we'll entertain any questions that you have.
Questions to Mr. Karch.
Hi, I apologize for not sending you this question earlier. I just ran out of time today. The Marion Detention Basin, how does that fall into here?
This is a good example. So, a request came in from a citizen to Alderman Burgess. Our stormwater utility fund, as you know, it is not in a good state. We're not able to do as much work as we need to. We have 75 public detention basins and 325 private detention basins. So, something like a Marion Street Detention Basin, that there's very much some work needed to be done, just some dredging out. We use contracts like this just to get it, just to be able to baby it along, to try to keep this going. It needs a much beefier, probably, you know, if you were to guess, you know, quarter million to $500,000 worth of work just on that basin alone. But we try to utilize this maintenance contract to go in there to keep pumps, to keep the things running that need to run. And so, this is the kind of example that our crews will use throughout the year to address citizen complaints as we can.
Is it included in this contract? I didn't see it.
So, that's because, good question. So, the way these contracts work, we don't have projects all listed out for the council to approve. These are a time and material basis is how these maintenance contracts are done. Because throughout the year, projects keep coming up, and so, we deal with it on a competitive basis. So, contractors bid actually on their labor rate. They bid on that, and we utilize those funds to be able to bid. So, what happens is, there are projects that we have waiting. Marion Street Detention Basin is a good example. After this is approved, our staff is able to then work with the contractor after the pre-construction meeting and be able to go out and start addressing the backlog that we've been waiting on for this new contract.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman Mathie. Oh, and then Painter, excuse me.
Jim, just one of the things in the wording in the background is, it says, "The work is beyond the capability of city crews due to lack of necessary equipment or manpower." That seems to be kind of a generic phrase that I've seen show up a bunch of times, but, I mean, are you keeping track of which ones which, so that we know that if there's a particular piece of equipment that is causing us to always have to contract things out, it might be worth purchasing that piece of equipment?
Yeah, a good example is a backhoe versus a highhoe. And so, I don't know if you've ever seen, right, I mean, everybody knows the difference, right? If you'll see the larger operations, basically, they'll have a trackhoe or a larger, a larger highhoe, is basically the bigger boomed type of equipment that does excavation. If you ever see those larger excavation digs, the equipment is substantial in size. A backhoe is much smaller, it's bigger than a truck, but again, it is, it's comparable. It's able to dig down to 10, 12 feet in that area. Anything deeper than that 12 feet and the boom arm of the backhoe just can't reach it. And so, we have to reach out, and that's where the outsourcing comes into play. If we looked at adding equipment, we also have to look at adding staff. Because, you know, right now, the work that comes in consistently exceeds what our crews are able to do. Again, kinda like Jason Kennedy, I've talked about it, he wants to get more done. Eric Outlaw, in that same way, has that frustration. They try to get, they see the backlog, and whenever you see that kind of level of work piling up, it gets tough.
So, do you guys keep some sort of, what I would call like a return on investment matrix to say, okay, we've done this particular repair enough times that if we just went out and bought this equipment and staffed it properly, we would be saving the city's money? Do you have those kind of numbers that you're keeping track of?
I don't. And the reason why I don't right now is, we've been moving toward a work order system for a little while now. And so, once we have some of that work order database, some of the information we had to try to compare our costs, were our own employees coming in, our own supervisors trying to be able to compare an apple to apple. And so, to be able to prepare really a good return on investment study like that, a work order system that accurately tracks more of the materials and time would be beneficial.
So, we're moving that way, so something we'll be able to look at in the future?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Painter.
Thank you. Quick question. So, has Gilder, Gildner been employed to do all of these FY 2016 and 2017 utility maintenance projects? Or does the city help with that? Or how does that work?
So, how that works is, Gildner, this year, once they're awarded it, they'll do all of the work for this year. In the past, there is, there are city crews that did some of that work, but there was also other contractors every year that would do it. So, this year, there might be water, there might be storm, there might be sewer, like the Marion Street Basin, for example, with storm, that Gildner then would go out and take care of. Every year, we award these contracts, and whatever contractor gets it, that's who does the work. Is that your question?
So, it's all of this work that they're going to be doing?
All of this work.
Or does the city do part of it?
The examples you have before you, in your packet, those are samples that we put in there to show you the kind of work that was done in past years. Now, I see your question.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Alderman Howman.
First of all, I wanna say thank you for the bid recap or tabulation, 'cause sometimes we get all the bids in there, and it's like, I'm probably not gonna read them line for line. Anyway, I just had a couple of questions, and one is, like, on the cement mation, the rate goes from, our restaurant was $73, and there was a bid for 40, a bid for $71, and a bid for a penny?
Now, what's?
What do we get for a penny?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Just curious.
What's interesting, and anytime you look, if you look extensively at how bids are done, this is little bid education for the council, contractors will put more money in some areas that they think might get more utilization than others. So, as a staff, it's always that balance of, how do you know where to put that? 'Cause, let's be honest, contractors are trying to get these bids. If they think they can add more money to one line item that is not used as extensively, they're able to capitalize and make more money. The way that these are done is, we actually look at what types of projects have we seen in the past, what is the typical utilization rate by hours? And so, we make our best guess. What I've found, over the years that we've been doing this, we tweak it about every year. We find what works, what works best. Do we need extra, you know, hammer, so to speak, with a contractor? Do we need to change the contract? And so, we've been always trying to find, do we miss anything this last year? And so, we make tweaks every year accordingly.
It just seems like, even like truck driver, it goes from $30 to 60, well, to $60. I mean, that's dope.
Well, a good example of this is, some contractors that have worked with our staff, they'll actually give us better rates if they know and they're familiar with our staff, 'cause they'll say, "We're able to save money because of the way you mobilize or give us information and work with us." And so, to the credit of our engineering division, they're the ones who coordinate this work, and so, the engineer, Ward Snar, Jeff Rains, that is out in the field as well, those folks get a lot of credit, 'cause the contractors that work with them say, "Hey, you're communicating well with us, you give us the projects ahead of time, that saves us money, therefore, we save you money in the future." Those help.
Thanks.
Other questions?
I've got a motion.
Alderman Schmidt?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Howman. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay? We move on to our last action item, and that's consideration approving a resolution establishing creation of a downtown task force to assist with the planning and determination of city's next steps in revitalizing downtown Bloomington. And actually, I'm supposed to give a brief presentation here, just as a bit of clarification. Certainly, when I was first elected, I thought about establishing a downtown task force, and I didn't wanna just do it as mayor. I could, but I wanted the council buy-in, but we didn't have a plan. So, we had, they got the downtown plan passed December 13, and then we had 8,000 people, as I'm reminded, that were involved in the comprehensive plan, that passed about a year and a half ago. And so, now, it seems we need to figure out a way to link these things, what are our next steps? We did not have an implementation piece in the downtown plan. And this particular commission comes out of a discussion that Alderman, Alderman Schmidt and I and Alderman Mathie had with Tricia, and we kind of were brainstorming, and we came up with some ideas, and actually came up with nine people. It was a group effort that came up with the nine names. Everybody said yes, and it does include three Aldermen to help be a liaison, obviously between the appointed committee that's purely recommending things, and us, as elected officials, and kind of vice versa. So, that's the backdrop of it. Again, it is purely advisory, and Jeff, there had been a question in talking the other day with Alderman Sage about any kind of conflict of interest, 'cause it would be, obviously it would be unusual, if maybe not impossible, to have a downtown revitalization commission anywhere that didn't have downtown stakeholders. So, I wanted you to talk to that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the key is that this is gonna be an advisory task force that will just be making reports, recommendations to the city council. So, in reality, there's no more power given to this group of people than if they were to come to public comment and advocate for the council to take certain action or to make, you know, certain proposals. The same with the Aldermen, they've got no more or less power than sitting in your chair that you sit in right now. So, from that perspective, since this is purely an advisory commission, it's not really creating any additional rights or responsibilities, and so, we do not have a concern with there being a, per se, conflict in this situation.
Okay. You might wanna stick around in case there's some other questions, okay? All right. And then, there was, the other concern, and it certainly seems reasonable, is that there wasn't an end date in drafting this. And some of that is because, if I'm not mistaken, we weren't sure, I'm also looking at Tricia and others who were involved, that at what point in time, unlike the budget task force, where we had a very specific date, we might have the plans merged, or do we start with short-term and midterm goals, kind of like are identified in the implementation plan? Do the longer-term goals take a little longer? But certainly, we could amend this to make it, you know, ending in six months or a year, and then we could reauthorize it to continue if necessary. And there are many cities, of course, who have a permanent downtown committee, but but that's not what this particular commission was envisioned to be.
And, um, just reflecting on how we did the downtown entertainment task force, which was also kind of synthesizing some ideas, I think we had a, maybe a check-in date of about three months and then a, um, a request that there be a final report in about six months or something. I mean, we, it was, it was time certain so that we would, everybody would know, you know, what-
What's going on.
Kind of what's going on and-
Well, then, these would be public meetings and public comment-
Right, right.
Like, just like the budget task-
Which we did with that task force as well.
As well, okay.
And those could-
Well, is, and that might be a reasonable, I'll kind of turn to the possible chair here, uh, and we could think maybe three months as, uh-
Is that too fast?
Yeah, no, no, it just, it could be three months and six-month termination. Alderman Hellman and Sage.
Thank you. Um, yeah, in, in looking at maybe some, some timelines, uh, you know, first one having the, the priorities and then, um, the second one having the, the definite action plan to support that. So, get the buy-in on the, the priorities. And if it were done by the end of the year, then we could plan, it could be, um, hopefully, parts of that could be in the, the nineteen, fiscal year nineteen budget. If we go past, you know, if we go past the end of the year, end of the calendar year, it would be harder for staff then to include that in the-
So, you're thinking the priorities and then the short-term goals or maybe midterm goals? And then, so it could possibly be extended after the end of the year, but-
Yeah, so the priorities, you know, and this is, the, the task force, or, you know, the task force would need to come, you know, establish these themselves, but, you know, three months for the, the priorities and then another three months to look at the, the definite action steps that would support that. Um, and like I say, that would then give the, um, Patty Lynn and her crack staff to, um, time to, um, hopefully be able to put that into the budget-
Okay.
-for the next year.
So, those particular dates, if they, if this were an amendment, would be, uh, August thirty-first would be approximately three months, and then December thirty-first would be the termination date, and then it could be eligible to be extended.
Sure, yeah.
Alderman Sage.
Um, yeah, thanks. And, and I think that's, that's probably a good approach to time-box it. Jeff, appreciate your comments about, about the conflict of interest. Um, I had suggested another, another possible disclosure around task force members who had currently received or in the past had received incentives from the city. If, if that's something the commission decides to do, that's, that's fine. I'm, I'm always of the opinion, you, you answer these questions before they get asked, because these questions will seem to inevitably get asked. The, the, um, I guess the, the one final, or a couple of other thoughts, um, I would, would encourage Amelia to, um, as they, to create their consolidated list, the combining and merging of, of the downtown plan and the comprehensive use plan, to keep the source notations in there as to where those come from, because that provides nice line of sight for everybody to see the, the, the continuity coming through those three documents. Um, and, and again, can validate the work that, that others have, have done and, and gone into both the downtown plan and the comprehensive land use plan. Um, the, the final thing is, and in thinking some about, um, what I consider to be one of the shortcomings of the budget task force, um, was that there, there was a lack of, of access, um, a lot of times by the public to, um, to our meetings and so forth. You know, I would encourage the, the downtown task force to consider meeting here so that the, the meeting, meetings can be streamed. Um, it allows our stakeholders, who would, I think, be comprised a lot of, of downtown business owners, who may not have the opportunity to, to attend these meetings and, and, and see those, to be able to get online and, and follow what's, what's being said and understand what's being said. And, and I think that's important, right? Because downtown development is one of our top five priorities. And so, to, to create a situation where people have as many access channels into that, whether it's, um, you know, walk-in, um, click-in, whatever, um, term you want to use. So, again, would appreciate, do, do those all seem, seem reasonable?
I think so. Legitimate change in this.
Okay, all right. And then you'll let us know?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I wonder, could I have a motion to approve with an amendment to section two, uh, at the very end, the last sentence would read, "An initial report will be issued back to the council by August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, and a final report by December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen." And then, of course, if there's more time, then we can consider that, is that-
Right, I'll make a motion with that amendment that you've-
Okay. Second by Alderman Hellman. Any further discussion? Alderman Mathie?
Mayor, I just wanted to add that, you know, one of the reasons why I brought this to you, um, originally, was because I was concerned about the number of cave-ins that have happened in downtown just this past winter.
Thank you.
Um, you know, and I think most of them were related to water mains, but, uh, it seemed like, from my perspective, walking from the parking garage every day, I would see a, a public works crew or a water crew that was fixing, they had a hole dug in the street, um, were fixing it, it's patched. A week later, the crew was twenty feet further down the road, down Center Street, as they're moving their way up the hill. And it just moved, I think they moved five times, maybe six times, including once around the corner on the Jefferson Street. And it just kept happening. And all I could think about was, um, Jim Karch's presentation from a few months ago, where he said emergency repairs cost the city two and a half times more than planned maintenance ahead of time. And so, and I know that Center Street was bad this winter, but in past years, it's been Main Street, it's been Monroe Street, it hasn't been isolated to any one portion of the downtown. I mean, the sewers, the water mains and everything down there are well over a hundred years old. And we know this, I mean, some of them are brick at this point. And, uh, the amount of money that I, it feels like we're wasting making these emergency repairs, you know, needs to be addressed. Plus, I want to make sure that we do this in a way where we have a plan for the business owners, um, who are down there, because if, when we decide to move forward with this, it, it could potentially mean digging up Center Street or Main Street for six or nine months. And, um, you know, when Normal did their massive rehab up there, there was a lot of businesses that never reopened after that time period. So, I want to make sure that we're very thoughtful and considerate and have a plan to communicate with building owners and business owners and work with them on how they can stay open during this period of time. You know, and, and we haven't done anything for a hundred years. Hopefully, if we do it right, we won't have to do anything for fifty or sixty or more years in the future, but how do we get through this one-time Herculean event? So, that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm very excited we're moving forward with this.
Yeah. Thank you, Jamie. I appreciate that. Nice. Anything else? Okay, all right. The, uh, motion on the floor? The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. At this point, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hales for City Manager's Report.
Mayor and Council, just want to show you a, a little sign that you're gonna see going up around the city, and it says committed to zero injuries. This morning, uh, we were, uh, at our senior staff meeting, uh, these were passed out by Alex Rosas, together with a very positive report showing a comparison of our OSHA recordable injuries this year compared to last. And, uh, Steve, I was looking for my example here for a minute. Uh, let me just, you know, paraphrase, approximately, last year, uh, let's see, here it is. I got it. Last year at this time, in the calendar year, from January sixteenth, Aprils, uh, we had about thirty-four OSHA recordable injuries. This is of city crews. Uh, so far this year, we've had seven. And, and let me say again, thirty-four last year, seven this year. Uh, we're, we'll be bringing to you, uh, a very more expanded report on just what is going on on our city's, uh, risk management, uh, uh, injury reduction plan. Alex Rosas is doing a tremendous job as our loss prevention specialist. But, um, i- if anything, I think what we're trying to do is, is make sure that we have the safest work environment possible for our employees, uh, and that any employee always feels like he or she has the right to raise a concern if they feel that the, uh, the work, uh, is something that could pose an unreasonable exposure to an injury to them. Uh, and if anything, it's, I, the progress we're making, the safety culture that's being created, the involvement, not only of rank-and-file employees, but also superintendents and managers, I think, has just really, uh, made a major, uh, one-eighty in that. So, it's just, uh, and I share these statistics with you every month, uh, but I think this was just such a significant, and as we watch videos from various other companies around the world, again, uh, these companies don't have goals of a certain number of injuries. Time and time and go ahead and their goal is zero injuries. So, uh, I thought that was just a significant, and I just wanted to give you some information as you see these particular signs go up. And I just, uh, commend Alex and others, all the directors and supervisors, superintendents, for all their efforts to create a much more safe, uh, environment for our enjoy, or in employees. So, thank you very much.
For the city's-
Well, more or less kind of around the city offices and things like that, yes. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I want to start out by, uh, thank you, Mr. Hales. Uh, Mr. Hales and I were on a, well, we did a dog and pony show, pretty good dog and pony show for the Rotary Lunch last week, got good reviews and some good follow-ups. And, uh, so, you know, it was, I was typically a little more outrageous than Mr. Hales, who was much more professional, but it was, it was a nice compliment, the yin and the yang. So, thank you. The, on a-
Mayor, it's just always, almost impossible to kind of meet your particular standard from a presentation, lecture. As, as a political science professor, I always wonder how I could ever measure up, but you do an excellent job.
Oh, geez, you checked in the mail, David. Okay.
[laughing]
Yeah, but I'm a lot calmer now than I was thirty years ago. It was kind of like Roger Rabbit on speed. Yeah. It is. You should meet my half-sister. I understand how type B people must feel around me, you know? Uh, I, on a more somber note, we did have a very unfortunate situation, and I'm looking to Alderman Womble, 'cause it was in his warden we met last night, just after I got out of, uh, I was in a good mood, it was beautiful day, got out of seeing Guardians of the Galaxy, and so, I was smiling. And then, I got a text, actually from the mayor of Carlock, who happened to be out at McGraw Park, and there were some racial epithets, some swastikas and some other profanity. And it was very unfortunate, and it turned out to be teenagers, they were caught, but I ran out there and then Moboka and his wife came out and we had some of the citizens, and so, we've taken, we took pictures. And I understand some wound up on social media. Uh, again, we do want to stress that we are a city where the national nod in our town movement began, but that doesn't mean we still don't have our work cut out for us here at home. And it, um, just looking at that, and, and kind of standing in the melee of it, you know, you just wonder what has to be in a teenager's mind, uh, to, to do or write something like that. Um, anyway, it, um, it's been taken care of, we do know who the, the people are, but again, I would ever urge us to be vigilant and understanding. I, I kind of don't like the word tolerance, 'cause tolerance suggests, I don't like something about you, but it'll be okay.
Right.
Right? Uh, it, it's more understanding. We're all human beings and we're all shockingly alike genetically throughout the entire world, but we spent most of our, uh, at least recorded human history slaughtering, raping, pillaging each other. So, we're hoping to make, uh, even more progress. So, and again, that's a somber note. The other thing, just to let everybody know, mainly the council, um, the liquor commission tomorrow is going to be considering a, a possible ordinance, and it, it'll be the first, we're gonna do it at least twice, uh, before you get it, so it'll be several months probably before you get it. But, an ordinance that involves, uh, I guess the, the best way to put it would be, um, complimentary liquor service. Apparently, going back for three mayors, there was a kind of don't ask, don't tell for First Fridays, so whether or not it's Fox and Hound or other places, they're not established to serve liquor, they could give complimentary wine and beer. And our legal department, after somebody filed a complaint, said, okay, well, we don't, we don't, we're not gonna charge them, but you probably should do something about this. So, there'll probably be a nominal charge of like fifty dollars for a year, and then asking that people get certain kinds of insurance. So, I try to be, make it as, as least bureaucratic as possible. Some of the ones that we saw in champagne and other places are really, really, really complicated. And so, at, at the end of the day, we're gonna try to keep it very simple, uh, but it is an issue we'll begin to talk about tomorrow. And my guess is, if we're talking about it tomorrow, this might come to the council in July. So, just FYI, okay? Anything else? Automatic comments? Alderman Hellman?
I don't know, it's a, I don't think this has to go in the minutes, Cherry, but, um, I'm going to Andrew Above after this, if anybody wants to join me. I'm not paying, but I would enjoy the company.
Oh, come on!
Of council staff or, or the public that would like to, um, have half-price wine night.
Oh, that's right, it's half-wise, half-price wine night. Right, okay. Any other comments? Alderman Womble?
Yeah, sure. Um, thank you. I, I wanted to, uh, just say a few words. I, this past week has been pretty eventful for Word Three, which is, uh, unusual, but, um, first, I wanted to recognize, uh, the family of Sergeant Rogers, um, 'cause, uh, he's a true, um, American hero. And, uh, you know, I, in reading the obituary, it's hard not to feel a special kinship, you know, to the family, because he, uh, went to the same schools as my, my kids. Uh, so, it's, uh, it's, I don't know, it's very, I mean, emotional and touching. Um, and I, I mean, it, and I met his dad, um, today, Kevin, um, and it's, it's very, um, um, I'm not surprised that they were able to, to raise, uh, you know, such a fine young, young person, just in meeting him. I'm, I, I think I, you know, I, I don't think I would be able to, uh, you know, to, to have the same sort of, uh, he seemed somewhat upbeat, you know, um, in, in a situation like this, and I think it would have been difficult for me. So, you really look at your kids, you know, you, you think, you know, what would, what would you do in a situation like this? And I don't think I would be able to be so upbeat, you know, at this, at this time. And that, uh, you know, it, it shows you, uh, what kind of people they are. So, I just wanted to be able to recognize them. Um, also, I, I wanted to, uh, just say a few words about, um, you know, the ugly incident that we had yesterday. Uh, I, I think I, one, I want to thank the police department, um, but also, uh, public work staff and, and also park staff for, um, you know, really working together, uh, to, uh, to address the situation, but also the city manager, you know, that I, I spoke with on, on Sunday night. Uh, and I understand, we also had some calls to, uh, Assistant City Manager, Steve Rasmussen, as well. Um, you know, and the mayor was right, you know, we, we always have a, you know, work to do in this area. You can't change everybody. Uh, these were teenagers. Um, I'm, I'm glad that we know who they are, uh, they were caught, but, um, hopefully, there will be some, some lesson learned. So, I, um, I think, um, at some point, uh, and I, and I still don't know, and I've spoken with staff about this a little bit, so I, um, I'm not sure, uh, what the, uh, in what format I want to do that, but I really want to explore the lessons learned in terms of how, uh, we address this issue, uh, quickly. Um, again, I, I don't want to be, uh, I don't mean this to be critical, but I, like I said, I always look for lessons learned. So, I think, uh, there, there are some things we can definitely do. For example, I, you know, I, I wasn't too excited to see this on social media so quickly. Um, and, and, you know, and there were over, uh, at least at last count, more than a hundred plus shares, you know, of the, of the incident. I mean, it is what it is, but, um, but at the same time, I, I think we have to, to really think about that, you know? What does that mean? Uh, you know, what does it say about the community? What sort of response, you know, do we, do we want to have, if any, uh, you know, in situations like this? So, look for something from me, uh, you know, in the future and wanting to start some, some conversation about this. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to mention also to the water department, um, because they were right on my street, but not near my house, though. But we, uh, we had a, a, a fire hydrant and a, and a leak, uh, in, um, you know, at the corner of Copper Creek and, and Melrose. Um, and, you know, the, you know, it was interesting how the, the residents, uh, reacted to it, because they, they called around, you know, six o'clock in the morning, and then about, uh, you know, two hour, two or three hours later, you know, the water department staff was out there and the residents posted a picture of the, the staff doing their work and the residents posted a picture of the staff doing their work, and they, with a caption that said, you know, "The water department doesn't mess around." You know, so they took care of it very quickly, you know, over the next two or three days, and I think I've texted and emailed Bob more than I ever have in four or five years that I've known him.
He's nodding.
Right. Yeah, I think I've exceeded my quota of emails and texts to him, so just wanted to say thank you and recognize the work that they did. So thank you.
Alderman Sage, and then Mathie.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, we were here for, I think, approaching nearly five hours, and it was a marathon meeting, and I know we were all ready to go home, I was. At that meeting, we did wrap up as part of the annual evaluation process, David, for you as city manager. And I wanted to take a moment and just publicly thank you for your service to the citizens of Bloomington, and I include myself in that group as well. I have the privilege of working a little bit more closely and regularly with you than so many of the citizens do. And over the years, you know, it's kind of a strange relationship we have amongst our group, in that we work together over a period of time, but we don't work together as closely as perhaps you do in the workplace, or as much as you interact with your family. But there is, there are relationships that develop over time, and I've concluded for myself, that there's a progression for me that starts off with respect and then trust, and those take time to develop. And I want you to know that I appreciate that I'm at the point where I'm able to say, you know, how much I both respect and trust you. It's a difficult position that you're in. I always try to help folks understand, wrap your mind around the idea of thinking that there are 10 people who think you're, you know, they're your boss. And so, you know, then I start to get a little bit of the aha, you know, some of the lightbulbs start to come on in that scenario. There was no shortage of planned work last year, and seemingly other large amounts of unplanned work that popped up. And the results that were delivered, we've talked about, and they were significant. But along with that was the attitude and the approach that you bring, where I can say at every turn, "I saw you remain professional and positive." So that's always, as I think about leadership and about evaluation of leadership, I think about both those objective measures that we've talked about, as well as the subjective measures. And I appreciate the approach you bring to that. The other thing, and I've said this before, but again, the important thing is, I think you say more than once, whenever I'm listening to people in leadership, I listen closely to how many times I hear the word "I," and how many times I hear the word "we," or how many times I hear leaders call out other people by name. And one of the things that I think is always significant is the way, both publicly and privately, you talk about the accomplishments of the employees of the city, the directors on down to the supervisors and to the employees. And you very rarely, if ever, draw attention to yourself, and you're quick, you're quick to offer the praise of others, but not so quick to always acknowledge the contributions you have in the work that gets done here at the city. So again, I wanted to say thank you for that, and I am considered a privilege to work with you as our city manager, and appreciate your many contributions to the people who live here in Bloomington, so thank you.
Alderman Mathie.
That's rough to top, so. I just wanted to say, you know, with the funeral procession for Sergeant Rogers that happened on Saturday, how proud I was to be a resident in Bloomington. There were thousands and thousands of American flags all along the route, there were thousands of people standing and being respectful in every direction that I looked as I watched it all, and to watch the community come together to show respect and honor for Sergeant Rogers, it just made me very proud to be a resident of Bloomington and very proud to be up here. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I would, whoops, be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Alderman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Hauman. All in favor of signature, probably saying aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.